The Board meeting of District 721 to order. Stand or note that all board members except Tammy are present. Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
By the United States of America and Republic of Wichita, Sanes, One Nation Under.
We don't have anyone here for open forum. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Any additions or anything? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Anything to add?
No, that's, I'm good.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next, we have the committee reports, policy.
Okay, we met for September and October already, and we're due for November next week. So it'll be our third meeting coming up since the start of the school year. And in the review of the policies, we will now be doing, the policies will now be on a three-year review cycle in line with the MSBA. And then of the policies that were reviewed last month, or actually in October, the food service, Policy 726 was reworked. Rewritten. And then we are currently looking at policy with the textbooks and instructional materials. We're going to be reviewing that in our upcoming meeting. Did you have anything to add, Jean?
No.
Okay.
Any Southwest Metro?
Yes, we had our Southwest Metro meeting on Tuesday, October 21st. We had a report on the juvenile alternative facility that students that have problems at home or other issues can be placed in for a period of time to work on their issues and hopefully get things cleared up and then sent back home again. It's not an incarceration type of program, but it is one that does provide support for students and alternative way of working on some of the issues that they have that are causing them some problems at their certain part in their lives. We were pleased to hear that Cindy Walter is one of our administrators for the Southwest Metro Co-op, was named Minnesota ACTE Administrator of the Year. And congratulations to her for that. We approved a number of different items as far as policies were concerned. We approved the COP Family Foundation Random Acts of Kindness Grant for $500. We approved a 2014 Community Garden Mini Grant for $500. And I believe that was it.
Thank you. Any CPAC?
Yes, we had, we had our CPAC meeting this past Tuesday, and we tried something different. The folks tried for a morning meeting at 8:00 AM. It seemed like it worked quite well. It was well attended. The meeting consisted of having a PowerPoint called "The Lens of a Parent", talking about different reactions that parents in our district have to having their students in special education programs. And it was very complimentary and very kind in terms of how much parents appreciate the special services support that their children get. It was very heartwarming to see those comments. We talked about staff changes and new hires in the special needs programs. We talked about the Unified Sports Program, the one that we're talking about approving, for example, the bowling one. And there'll probably be other ones coming along the way. And what's unique about these is that it pairs special needs students with non-special needs students and kind of opens up more interaction with both facets of our student body, those with special needs and those that are supportive of them that are not in special ed. So that's something that will continue to grow, and it's a great idea. We heard about the need for a parent representative for the advisory committee. And then we had a little bit of an open forum. At, at that open forum, what we talked about were support agencies that are available for parents, special needs students. One being ARC and the other one being, second. Oh, PACER, that was the other one. And these are two very good support agencies that give parents a lot of support in questions that they might have in dealing with their children that have disabilities. So all in all, it was a very good meeting, and I think the moving to the morning seemed to work very well.
Community Ed, I'll, I'll give a couple of things, and then I'll turn it over to Ms. Brooks. Mrs. Brooks. Tonight at Elko New Market, there is a candidate forum. Everybody should mark down November 13th. It's National Community Education Day. And then a second date to mark down is the 28th, which is after Thanksgiving, the Friday. And this is a fundraiser. It's called Color My World Black Friday Dance. And the talented Little Chicago Entertainment Group will be providing the music. The winter and spring catalog will come out in, on January 6th. And now Sherri's going to talk about the Community Closet. Or did you want to add something else?
Oh, no, that's okay.
All right, go ahead.
At the last meeting that Don and I attended last week, in fact, Community Ed wanted to start something called the Community Closet, where it's a place where families within the district can come and exchange their clothing. And it's, it's going to be done, they'll provide a place where their clients will feel welcome, comfortable, and served without judgment discreetly. So I, if you see a flyer, they're going to be having them go out, and they're gonna go ahead and start the Community Closet. So that's really all I had done, unless you had a...
I got a flyer here, if anybody wants it, they can have it.
Pass them down.
I've seen them.
This will take place in the girls' locker room downstairs, which isn't being used right now for very much, I guess. And it'll be by appointment only. You have to make an appointment in order to go in there.
And they're also looking for donations, which they can just contact.
In fact, this is Black Friday, Black Friday Dance is, is a lot for this donations. Underwear and socks will be new. You can't, they won't exchange those.
Thank you. Next, we have our superintendent report.
Okay, I'm, just give a quick update on two things. The first being a facility study. We're going to talk about that right now. We've had four meetings thus far. Our Task Force Committee has 34 members. I think the most we've ever had missing at a meeting is four. So, and I think that was the last meeting, we had 30 people there of the 34. So it's been very well attended. And like I said, the, we've had four meetings. The first meeting, basically getting people's, you know, opinions, just getting everything out on the table there, where they see the, what they feel where the district is for facilities, their opinion. The second and third meetings that we did, we had the architect and construction company work on this summer. They did an analysis, a facilities analysis, basically picked up what was left off from the 2008 study. They also shared the demographic study that was done by Hazel Reinhardt. So it was a lot of fact and information sharing, the second, third meetings, along with setting criteria that we wanted to get consensus on for the committee, or I should say Von Dirks, who's leading us through this process. And example of the criteria is, for example, middle schools come up quite a bit as being a need, looking at needs, and that it should be a 6'8" configuration. So one of the criteria was that agreed upon by the group that middle school should be either 6'8" or 5'8". And, and that's all they'd look at there. Or another criteria was that the school district will work with the city in planning future facilities. Those are some of the criteria. But at the last meeting, the fourth meeting, finally got to look at some options. And it was more general concepts, but before the architect could do any more work, they needed to get consensus on what options they should look at. And right now, the four options was adding on to the current middle school and increasing the size of such core areas as a kitchen and lunchroom, adding classroom space so it's grades 6, 7, and 8. And this could include a pool. This would require Central Avenue here to either be rerouted or vacated. And then the CEC building here could be used for expanded early childhood programming and continue to be the district office. The CEC here obviously would require more deferred maintenance projects and some remodeling. The option B was to remodel and add on to the CEC and make that the middle school. The early childhood programming, ALC and district offices would move to the current middle school, and it could include a pool. The third, option C, they called it, was to purchase land and build a new middle school, which could include a pool. And the CEC and current middle school would be available for repurposing or demolition. And we also looked at option D, build a 400-student middle school on land that the school district owns in Elko New Market. And so we'd have two middle schools, both housing grades 6, 7, and 8. And a pool could be included at the new school. So what they did then, they broke up into small groups and did strengths and weaknesses, threats and opportunities. So they did a swap model and had a lot of discussion. And it was decided by, again, it's the, the task force members that are doing all the discussing and, and talking about this, is to take continued further look at options A, B, and C. Option D was taken off the table. At this time, it was thought by, it was unanimous by everyone that there's not enough growth at Elko New Market right now to consider, at least in the five to 10 time, year timeframe right now, to go to middle schools at this time. So there, the thing that's come across, I think, throughout the process is identifying needs is a middle school that's got 6, 7, and 8, that there's not going back and forth. There's security issues. And, and with that, that people have identified that we need more early childhood space. Right now, we're capped off at 260 students. And when you have all day, every day kindergarten, early childhood's only going to grow in the years ahead. They want to make it, any new space we have, it be intergenerational. So we have things for, like I said, early childhood, pre-K, all the way through seniors. And that it may include a pool. There's been a lot of discussion on that, and that has stayed throughout the conversation. So along with working with the city on our plans with this. So that's where we're at right now. We have our fifth meeting coming up on November 5th. And again, we'll have more detailed, we'll have a more detailed look at the three options along with a cost analysis. So we'll have a good idea, and for example, what a new middle school would cost with including purchase of the land, or what would it cost to remodel the CEC? And what, what would the cost be for a pool? Or what would be the cost to add on to the middle school? So I guess that's what's going to be shown to the task force at the next meeting.
Is there any timeline behind these recommendations?
Yeah, we're, we have a total of six meetings. So we've, right now, we're on schedule for just two more meetings. That'll be November 5th and then November 19th. So we're hoping at the November 19th meeting that the task force will be making a recommendation to you as school board members here.
I think what's interesting is initially, we were, they were supposed to come up with five items of high priority. And obviously, you're hearing the middle school and swimming pool. That's the focus of the discussion. But there was also transportation and servicing our debt. And then you mentioned, and then you mentioned the ECFE. Those are, those are the top five.
Yeah, transportation, I should have mentioned that.
It was one, and servicing the school district debt.
To have a garage or...
Right. But the discussions have been around middle school and swimming pool, obviously.
Yeah, it's been consistent. And I would say this, besides taking the opinions of the task force members, or if you look at the analysis, it also, when they, they surveyed the staff here at New Prague School District, I believe we had 125 or 123 staff members fill out that survey. It was rather lengthy, detailed survey. But the needs from that survey matched everything that we've talked about in those four meetings. So it wasn't anything new or anything different. It was all in alignment on that. As far as the Elko New Market too, we had several people from Elko New Market were the ones, because it was a pointed question by one member, people from Elko New Market, where they're at with option D. And they were in agreement, like I said, it was unanimous at this time. It's just, to have 400 students, it'd be difficult right now. Trying to do the middle school concept would be a cost to have co-curricular activity programs, especially for a smaller school like that. Could it be done down the road, possibly? But when we're talking five years, 10 years down the road, we just don't, the committee, I would say, the people on the committee didn't think it was a viable option at this time.
I thought that was good to hear from that New Market group to say that. That was very helpful.
And Kit and Jerry, I mean, I think the process has gone very well, better than I could ever have hoped for.
People are very dedicated to doing what they're tasked to be doing and coming up with the real important things.
Yep. Our next meeting will be of a tour of Falcon Ridge Elementary at 5:30. And we'll have the meeting start at 6:30, and we can get done at 8:30. And I will say this, it's the fastest two hours. I mean, time just flies. It is a very interesting process.
Yeah, Von does a great job leading that process up.
We have a good facilitator in Von Dirks. And Kit and Jerry, myself, Sandy Lynn, we just sit in the back. And if there's any questions, we answer questions. Otherwise, it's, it's this group of people that, and I think we have a good variety of people there, and they've done a great job. Okay, anything else? All right, then I just want to share with the public our calendar survey. That was completed. We had a great return rate from parents and staff. And the, the four options there was, basically on the survey, we, we said we could start a week early, because we have a construction project by state statute. We can start a week early. So the first option was to start on August 31st and end by June 2nd with a spring break. And we also had, starting on August 31st, and go to May 26th, no spring break. And then we had, starting at the regular date, with the late Labor Day, starting on September 8th and ending June 9th with a spring break. And then starting September 8th and ending June 2nd without a spring break. So we got some good feedback. And like I said, we had a good response by people. The, the top choice being starting early on August 31st. It was by far the, the greatest return rate for number one and two. And it also had the least amount of number four rank, was to go August 31st with a spring break and ending June 2nd. So we talked it over at a work session. And right now, I'm in the process of putting together a calendar that has, is within those parameters right now. But appreciate the feedback. We also asked another question in the survey about having school on Martin Luther King Day and President's Day. We're going to do the schedule with, without having school on those days, by the way. But it was interesting, over 50% were fine with that. In fact, there was more votes for, it didn't matter than no on that. So just something to think about in the future. And I think it was a good process to get, to get both staff and parents input on this. And, you know, we're not going to keep everyone happy, but we want to make sure it's a good calendar for, for learning, a good calendar for families and our staff too. So I think people will, you know, by and large, will be satisfied with the survey. And I'd like to discuss it at our November work session and bring it to, for you to approve at the November meeting. Any questions? Okay. And then for good news, I've been informed, congratulations are in order for two teachers. One is Erin Streiflin from Falcon Ridge, third grade teacher from Falcon Ridge, and Emily Jasperson from High School Science. They've been nominated by their colleagues for the TIEZ Exceptional Teacher Award. Teachers are selected for having a positive impact on student learning through technology. And they're going to be recognized at the TIEZ Educational Technology Conference on Tuesday, December 9th. And so all their great work that they're doing for students is very much appreciated. So Erin Streiflin, from third grade Falcon Ridge teacher, and Emily Jasperson from High School Science are getting the awards this year for doing exceptional job, having a positive impact on student learning through technology. So congratulations to them.
Thank you. Next, we have the choir trip. Ryan, do you want to present that?
Good evening. I'd like to present the choir tour this year to the Bahamas over March 28th through April 2nd. It's a part of the Carnival Festivals at Sea program. We would fly down to Florida and then perform on the Carnival cruise ship, The Sensation. And we would perform through the festivals at seas, which involves singing in front of a clinician and performing onboard the ship as well, along with some other musical experiences that we would have, such as seeing professional shows and also professional performances each night. And the students also could participate in some pretty fun things, such as like karaoke with a live band. It sounds like it's pretty exciting as well on that. The students have been given opportunities to fundraise. Every year they're in choir, we do a Happenings fundraiser. And also this year, some students took advantage of cleaning off the football field after games and such to raise some funds for that too. Right now, we have right around 30 kids going that have given me a deposit to go. And we have a few chaperones as well selected to meet the Carnival Cruise specifications, which are more stringent than, than our school board's specifications, or our school district, I guess. Let's see, and then we have, yeah, the parents have been informed as far as when the deposits will be due. They're sort of spread out so that people can get the money in. But yeah, there's some kids who are very excited. We'll probably, as a part of this Carnival Sensation tour, we'll probably break the kids apart into small groups of performers rather than having one large choir, because there's kids from each choir that are going. And that makes the logistics pretty difficult to get their, to get them all practicing at the same time, which is one option that we could do with this program. Through our music education, we expose students to a lot of different cultures. We've sang in many different languages. We study the backgrounds of our songs as well. And we'd like to experience the culture of the Bahamas. Do you have any questions?
How many days of school were they going to miss?
Oh, they're only going to miss two days of school.
Okay.
So it's a Monday and Tuesday of the, of our break for like Good Friday and such.
And you'll be back Thursday?
We'll be back the Thursday, yeah, so that families can still be with each other for Easter.
Aren't any further questions? Can I have a motion to approve the band trip?
So moved.
I'll second.
Okay, go ahead.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks, Ryan.
Thank you.
Next, we have the United Sports Bowling Club. Tim, did you want to?
Yep, we're just asking for approval to start the United Sports Bowling Club. And like Dennis was talking about earlier, it's an opportunity, it's an activity where you have special education students teaming with non-special education students. And the activity's going to be bowling. They're scheduling it so it doesn't interfere with any of our adaptive athletics or conflict with any of our, you know, regularly scheduled school events that, you know, we might have athletes in. So they're doing a good job of that. But I think it's going to be a very beneficial thing for all of our students. And it's at no cost to the school district. It's totally, every, the whole activity's paid for by Special Olympics Minnesota. So I think it's a win-win, and it, I think it's just a great thing that we can get these students together.
And this is going to be done at Strike Force in town?
Yep, Strike Force Bowling Center in New Prague.
We have a bowling club, don't, or bowling team too?
Yep.
That's separate, that's different from this. And they can, they can let her on the team, but not this, or they let her on both?
This one, they're just meeting, it's like monthly.
It's a club.
It's a club, it's pretty low-key. But it's a great opportunity to get kids together and go against other schools. And we might do futures, you know, other activities in the future.
And they'll play, will they have tournaments with other?
They'll have competitions with other schools, yep.
I'll make a motion to approve the United Sports Bowling Club.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next, we have the dance team recommendation.
Bring this forward to add a third coach to the dance team. Our numbers now have grown from mid-20s to high-20s. Now 35 last year to close to 40 students this year. I had Brad Skogarbo, our Activities Director, do a comparison. And we are the, of the 20 schools of similar size, there's only one other school has two coaches. So most schools are size, with that number of participants have between three and five coaches. So we're going to, my recommendation is we go to a third coach. The salary will be determined by our points committee after we have approval here at the school board level. So I, I think their numbers are, warrant a third coach.
That would start immediately, right?
Yes.
Yes.
And are they having trouble finding practice? The practice facilities aren't an issue, or how do they?
Well, it's, you know, we don't have the, they're trying to get in the gyms when they can, whether it's elementary, high school, or they're using the cafeteria. But, and I, and I'm not sure when the gymnastics center is going to get done, but we talked about also utilizing that space there too.
Yeah, that, that's what was one of the discussion points when we were approving the...
Yep. But I don't think they, not quite using that yet.
I'll make the motion to add an additional coach for the dance team, recommend dance team.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next, we have a resolution to accept a donation from Staging Concepts for the high school. I think it's a donation of wood, is that correct?
Yep.
Yes.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion to consider the resolution to accept a gift from Staging Concepts.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
We moved and seconded to consider the following resolution. Whereas the New Prague area school board has established a policy concerning the acceptance of gifts to the school district, whereas the policy states that the school board may receive for the benefit of the district bequests, donations, grants of gifts for any proper purpose, and the school board shall have the sole authority to determine whether any gift with a value $1,000 or more, or any precondition, condition, or limitation on use included in a proposed gift with a value $1,000 or more furthers the interests or benefits the school district and whether it should be accepted or rejected. Whereas the school board may accept the gift valued at $1,000 or more only by adoption of a resolution. Whereas Staging Concepts wishes to donate $1,923.87 of materials under the following conditions, for use by the New Prague High School Activities Department. Now therefore be resolved by the New Prague area school board that we should accept the donation under the prescribed condition. How do you vote on that, Don?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Sherri?
Yes.
Kit?
Yes.
Sherri?
Yes.
Dennis? Yes, item passes.
Next, we have two resolutions that we pass annually for the MSHSL grants. This is, these are grants that allow participants to get grants to participate in the sports for the free and reduced lunch students.
At this time, I'll consider a motion to, I'll look at the resolution of school board supporting application to the Minnesota State High School League Foundation Form A.
So moved.
Second.
We moved and seconded to consider the following resolution. Whereas the Minnesota State High School League Foundation was formed to provide support for Minnesota... for Minnesota's high school youth to participate in athletics and fine arts, whereas District 721 School Board recognizes the value of students' participation in extracurricular activities, whereas the Minnesota State High School League Foundation is offering grants and funding to assist school districts in recognizing, promoting, and funding extracurricular participation by high school students in athletics and other fine arts programs. Therefore, be it resolved that the District 721 School Board supports the district's application to the Minnesota State High School League Foundation Form A grant to offset student activity fees. How do you vote on this, Sherri?
Yes.
Kit?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Dennis, yes, item passes. Next, I'll entertain a motion to consider the Resolution Form B.C., which is a resolution supporting application to the State High School League for other grants.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to consider the following resolution. Whereas the Minnesota State High School League Foundation was formed to provide support for Minnesota's high school youth to participate in athletics and fine arts, whereas District 721 School Board recognizes the value of students' participation in extracurricular activities, whereas the Minnesota State High School League Foundation is offering grants and funding to assist school districts in providing seminars, training opportunities, or support for specific school functions for students, faculty, officials, and others who are involved in athletic and fine arts programs. Therefore, be resolved that the District 721 School Board supports the district's application to the Minnesota State High School League Foundation Form B.C. grant. How do you vote on this, Don?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Kit?
Yes.
Sherri?
Yes.
Dennis, yes, item passes.
Anyone want to make a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.